Right under the gun. I'm already in the zone.
I'm already in that zone.
It's been crazy.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, August 10, 2020. For the benefit of those watching on Comcast, Channel 14, or MetroNet, Channel 3, we welcome you, as well as any folks who may have joined us on Zoom this evening. Just a short announcement before we ask our city clerk to call the roll, and that is that I'm pleased to report, after having talked with a few of our folks in the city, that we had no significant damage in the city today when that storm went through. That was quite a wind, wasn't it? And we can be pleased that we were spared any significant damage. With that being said, I will call this meeting of the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council to order, and I would ask our city clerk Lynn Fizikas to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Finoukan.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. If you would please join me in standing and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business tonight is to approve tonight's agenda. I would like to see if any council members have any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda as printed. Seeing none and hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finoukan, seconded by Alderman Morris. Discussion, roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Finoukan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Tonight's agenda is approved as printed. We now come to the item on the agenda, public participation. I'd ask anyone who has not yet done so, if you have a speaker request form filled out. Our executive assistant Ruth Scott has those in the back. No one has asked to participate under public participation. And so we have one, and that is Jim Mason, and he'd like to speak during the laundromat gaming scenario, which is on the agenda tonight. So I trust Jim will be back, or Sarah, or someone will speak for him. So we move to presentations. The first one is a proclamation that this is a bicycle-friendly community. And I'd like to summarize that, and then I would like to present this to Jason Blumenthal, who is our staff liaison to not only the Environmental Commission, but also the Community Enhancement Commission. And so I, Jerry Smith, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim DeKalb, Illinois as a bicycle-friendly community on August 10, 2020. I encourage all citizens to continue to ride their bicycles to work, to school, to the store, to the park, around their neighborhoods, with friends and family, to promote the personal and societal benefits achieved from bicycling, and to show our continued commitment to being a bicycle-friendly community. Prior to presenting this to Jason Blumenthal, I'd like to commend one of our council members, who has been extremely helpful in bicycling in this community, and that is our second ward Alderman, Bill Finoukan. Bill has been very, very involved in the Bicycle with, biking with Beansy event that the Kishawaki Kiwanis Club has had. And so, Bill, I know that you're going to be very, very pleased to see Jason Blumenthal accept this on behalf of the City of DeKalb. Jason? Okay, item F on the agenda. These are appointments and reappointments suggested by the mayor. We can do these in omnibus vote, or we can do them individually. Any argument against doing this in omnibus form? If not, I would like to ask the approval of the following appointments and reappointments. Number one, appointment of Kathleen Clark to the Citizens Environmental Commission for the completion of a two-year term through December 31, 2020. Number two, appointment of Lance McGill to the Finance Advisory Committee for the completion of a four-year term through December 31, 2023. Number three, appointment of Dantania Washington to the Finance Advisory Committee for the completion of a four-year term through December 31, 2023. Number four, appointment of Bill McMahon to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the completion of a four-year term through December 31, 2024. Number five, reappointment of Marilyn Cleland to the DeKalb Public Library Board for the completion of a three-year term through June 30, 2023. Number six, reappointment of Joan Berger to the DeKalb Public Library Board for the completion of a three-year term through June 30, 2023. And number seven, reappointment of Leslie Metz to the DeKalb Public Library Board for the completion of a three-year term through June 30, 2023. I'd entertain a motion to approve these mayoral appointments and reappointments.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Finoukan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Those appointments are approved. Item G, consent agenda. Again, all items on this are enacted by one motion unless a member of the council chooses to remove one of the consent agenda items and give it single consideration. Anyone want to do that? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which reads thusly. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of July 27, 2020. Number two, minutes of the Joint Review Board of January 24, 2020. Number three, minutes of the Joint Review Board of June 26, 2020. And number four, accounts payable and payroll through July 27, 2020 in the amount of $1,686,452.17. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion? Was that the second by Alderman Smith, I'm sorry? That was moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Smith. Let's not fight over it now. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finoukan.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved as printed. We now move to public hearings, and we do have one public hearing tonight. And that is First Amendment to the amended and restated Park 88 Development Agreement to remove a 3.3-acre public use site in the Park 88 Development located along Macon Drive. Just a reminder that this is a public hearing. There are no time restrictions for anyone wanting to speak to this item. You need not have a consent or a speaker request form to speak before a public hearing. I will open this public hearing at 6:35, 6:35. And is there anyone from the public present who would like to speak to this item? If not, I'd like City Manager Nicholas to give us a few words on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Later on in the agenda tonight, there is an ordinance that would amend the Park 88 Development Agreement. So this hearing is preparatory to that. This hearing was designed to invite people, if they had an interest in commenting on a proposal by the developer of Park 88, Mark Good, to, basically, he's asking our permission to waive a requirement in the 2004 Development Agreement that called for the dedication of a 3.3-acre site for some city purpose. It wasn't defined whether that would be a fire station, a water tower, or what. At the time, a lot of time has gone by. There still is no city plan for that particular parcel. And now there is development interest in the adjacent parcel. This city-dedicated area would be the logical way in from Macon Drive to that 10-acre site. And so we've looked at the staff level, at the possible uses, and none of them, none of those that were considered in 2004 make sense to us now. So we're recommending support, as you will see later on in the agenda.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, I will close this public hearing at 6:37, and we will have further discussion on that item later on in tonight's agenda. We have two considerations tonight. The first one is creating a new liquor license category, laundromats. The gentleman who's proposing this is developer Jim Mason. Jim, if you would like to speak to this now, you may. Or Sarah Whiting, okay?
Hi, Sarah. Good.
All right, so we currently have a laundromat, built it in 2015 down on South 4th Street. They, when we originally built the laundromat, we had an interest in putting gaming down there, but it didn't pan out at the time. So we are thinking of reintroducing that concept, since some of the ordinances and stuffs have changed to allow us to do that. I think he's trying to get up my, I have some pictures there. So the laundromat is located at 1387 South 4th Street. It's in the old Eagle Center Building. Sullivan's used to be there. The proposal is for gaming and liquor. We have a little room in there. Right now, it's a, we have some massage chairs, a TV. It's more of just like a private area in the laundromat right now. But it was with, the total laundromat is 8,529 square feet. The proposed liquor gaming area is 242 square feet. The site plan now, just showing that the laundromat is there. We do still have a huge vacant space on the other side of the building. Lee Hands is in that area, and then we also have Dollar General in the commercial building as well. Oh.
Right here, this is the laundromat right here. This is Dollar General, and this is Lee Hands over here. Lee Hands owns this property. There's a lot line right there. This is a 800 square foot laundromat, and then this is a 20,000 square foot space that is empty, and then Lee Hands has rented this right back for their storage.
But we have been talking with Dan Olsen and Don from the city, and we're just trying to figure out how to get that liquor license for the laundromat, since there's nothing in the current code that would allow us to do that. Here is the layout of our current laundromat, and the little arrow there up on top, Jim will point it out here. That little area there is where we are proposing to put the, a small bar area, and then also a, the video gaming in there as well.
So the machines will go one, two, three, four, five, not six. The bar will go right here. The bar, the tent, this will always be watching like this. And we usually have another tenant over here. And this would run, you might run this laundromat now from 6:00 in the morning until 2:00 at night. That will, this will be very, very busy because people ask me.
Okay.
When I'm washing my clothes for two hours, can I play this, these machines? It's a no-brainer.
These are just kind of pictures of the laundromat, kind of showing you where the gaming area would be. This is just the laundromat itself, different machines that we have. Entrance, right when you walk in, if you see the, she's showing you that this, so this little black door there, that is where the gaming area would be, right from the front entrance. Again, just another picture of where it would be. This is inside that gaming room, so as you can see, we originally did bring it up for gaming. It does have like the, oh, where is that? Jim? Las Vegas, that's what I'm trying to think of. And then just another view of that room. This here is going to be something, we're using Excel Entertainment when we do eventually get to the gaming portion of this. And their team has put together kind of a, which is it going to play? Oh, it's not going to let me play it. Oh, there we go. It wasn't very long, but we can go to the next, I think they get the concept of it. So right now, we currently offer Wi-Fi, coin-operated massage chairs, cable TV, arcade games. And then we also have had a lot of customers asking about the gaming and the laundromat, which is kind of what brought us back to reintroducing the thought of it. And then beer and wine will only be served in the gaming area. It'll be located in a separate room. Liquor will be served from a small bar area in that game room only. And that is it. But we just kind of wanted you to get an idea of what our concept was going to be, to kind of see how we would introduce that into the code and allow us to have liquor there. Thank you.
So tonight, you simply are looking for city council direction in terms of whether or not this is something that council looks favorably upon or disfavorably on. Open it up for any discussion. Alderman McAdams.
So this is in my ward, and the few people that I've heard from on this have no problem with the gaming idea, but they do have a problem with the alcohol idea. And they're concerned about alcohol being served until late, served late in the evening. And I have not actually heard anyone give any positive response yet. So what would be your answer to that?
You can't have a gaming without alcohol.
Yeah.
Alcohol is required if you have gaming.
Yeah, you have to have it.
Yeah.
And to the fact that it's wine, wine and beer only, nobody's going to do that.
Okay.
We don't want to do that.
Right.
Why don't you hand Jim that microphone, just in case he has another question to answer? Anyone, any other comments? Alderman Favor.
So right now, you have the black doors. What's the, I guess the liquor's going to be contained only in that room?
Yes.
And I guess what if someone has brought children with them to the laundromat, and now they want to go into the bar area?
They can't.
And how is that going to be, how's that going to be maintained? Are you going to have, is staff going to be watching? Is it just going to be video recorded?
You have to have by law an attendant there behind the bar 20 hours a day.
And is the doorway, so then, I'm assuming you're going to remove that? Is it just going to be like a waist-high railing, or what's going to, what's going to separate?
We're not going to remove the doors. I'm not, the doors, that door there is a 36-inch door, and it's not coming off. We don't want the kids wandering in there. That's the law, too. The way they do this is you have to have, the bartender has to have sight of all the slot machines. That's all over the state, all over the city, of course, or the state of Illinois. And that's what we're going to do. This actually helps me out, because now we have two live bodies there most of the time. And that person will be taking care of that area, and the other person takes care of the rest of the laundromat. Answer your question?
It does. So you'll hate my next comment. I'm really opposed to the video gaming. I actually don't have a problem with the liquor license, so. But yeah, I, I just, I just don't see the value in the video gaming, but that's just my personal preference. But I have no problem with the, with the ability, you know, having someone go in and, you know, put in their wash and laundry, and then go have a beer or a glass of wine, whatever.
Well, don't forget, they don't have to play. They can just have the drink.
I know.
You know?
I know.
The other thing is, it's amazing. I always thought this slot machines and this type of activity was bad. But I found out, I think two-thirds of the people that use these machines are female. And they really love it. And the machines pay back about 80%, 85, or whatever it is. And so it's a great pastime for a lot of people. And I didn't, I don't do it, but a lot of people do.
Alderman Morris.
Do we have, do we have any more gaming licenses available?
What was the question?
Didn't we have a limit on our gaming licenses? How many do we have left? Do we have one left right now, or none?
I think it's only, I think what we've limited is the establishment of gaming-only facilities. And this is not considered a gaming-only facility.
So I feel a lot like Alderman Favor. I'm, hey, drink and do your laundry, that sounds like fun. But I do feel like there's, you know, I'm a little concerned about the gaming, too. But I, you know, I guess I want to be supportive. If this doesn't cut into our number, you know, I want to be supportive of what local business people are trying to do to make their businesses successful. At the same time, I do want us to be conscientious of the culture we're creating. So that's.
Carolyn, can I jump in? You wouldn't believe how many people, the farthest I have heard, been told anybody would drive to be that laundromat, it's 40 miles. So this laundromat, between Mason Indoor Golf and this place, people are going to drive to DeKalb to either wash their clothes, because the machines I have in there are the biggest, the biggest they make. 90, 80, 60s, and all that stuff. And there's, Wheezy, how many rooms, oh, how many machines in there?
58 washers, 54.
It's big enough to double the gross of the business that it does, and we can take care of it. I made it double what it should be. So, but people are driving distances from Rochelle and Big Rock and places like that. So we'll pick up that gaming, too.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alderman Verbic.
Yeah, video gambling has been a nice complementary income for a number of businesses, and it's proven to be a winner from a revenue standpoint. I think we, and I've already been looking at our peers around us, what do our peers charge as a municipality for the gaming terminals? The annual fees, the startup fees? And I think that's something we should look at, especially coming up on budget time, because we are a little low, if you compare us to our peers as far as what we charge. So that's just one idea, not to come out and charge Mr. Mason more on his venture here, but just to say, looking at this, looking at our neighbors, what should we be charging for this that really is a good revenue maker for the investors?
Staff is looking for some direction from city council as it relates to whether or not this is a proposal that has enough merit to be brought back to council. From what I hear tonight, I think it probably does. So unless there are any other comments, I, yes, Alderman Perkins.
Do you have one question? So with the liquor license, can you, can you buy a beer and take it out into the laundromat, then?
I don't think so.
It would be kind of whatever, however you want. It sounds like they're trying to make it a hospitality license. So however that were due would be for hospitality.
City Manager Nicholas?
No, you'd have to, no different than what you do in other establishments, you have to have control over who is drinking outside of the serving area. So you couldn't do it unless you had people with, you know, wristbands and the like, and somebody to police that the whole time that you're serving. So presumably, they would decide to have a beer, go in, whether they decide to play the gaming machines or not, sit down on a chair and drink the beer, or the wine, and then go back and change their loads, you know? But they can't go sit, watch the load go around, which 20 years ago, I might have thought about.
Right, right.
I don't think, that's definitely not allowed.
Okay, I sense that there is enough fodder here for further discussion. So Bill, if you would take that under advisement and move that back into us and council, and planning and zoning and whatever. Mr. Mason, thank you very much. Sarah, thank you for coming and giving us this proposal tonight. Thank you. Okay, we have one more consideration that the, that is listed on our agenda, and that is temporary fixed route service reduction within the DeKalb urbanization area. City Manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. This is on the agenda because if, under the federal guidance, if we were to make any changes in the regular service on a federally funded route, we have to bring it to you for direction. And as you can see, the provider of our fixed route transit service, TransDev, is struggling in the COVID crisis to keep enough staff to, in their opinion, operate the hours that we expect of the lines that have been established, and they are asking for a variation for a period of time until they feel they can get past this tough spot. Marcus Cox, our transit director, has been the point of contact with them, and he is here also to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. It certainly makes sense to me. I mean, here you have a system, and we know that, I mean, we don't even know yet what the lay of the land will be when Northern comes back next week. Because I don't think, in listening to Matt Strub the other day, they're just not completely sure as to the numbers that are going to be coming back in, and how many of those will be riding the transit. Marcus, did you want to make any comments on this, or?
I will, Mr. Cox.
Okay.
I have an answer to questions.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
Some questions? I sent Marcus some questions earlier. I'm just concerned it's a contract, and we always held everybody else accountable for contracts. I think everybody will agree that many employers are suffering issues with COVID. And a lot of employers have taken steps to manage that. My question is, what penalties will there be if they can't meet the November 2nd deadline? I mean, we're providing services to all of our citizens. I'm just concerned, you know, we want to keep this going. I don't want November 2nd to come around, and then we're all in trouble again. And I think the company should look at that, to be very honest with you. They should really, you know, be planning for that, you know, and what steps are they going to take, you know, are they going to protect everybody that, you know, needs to go to work? You know, I know there's an increase on the south side. I'm just worried about that.
Yeah, so if I could just kind of briefly do my best to address that. You know, I can say with confidence that if you're familiar with CDLs, that there is a shortage in CDL drivers across the nation. And there has been previously in any industry related to CDLs, trucking, busing. It's been really a challenge since 2010, and it's continued to get it such as technology.
It's been really a challenge since 2010 and it's continued to get it such as technology has continued to increase and require that demand in that industry. And I, I would be surprised if we were to go to most any other municipality or area to not see a significant decrease in ridership across the country. We saw a 90% decrease in ridership in April. We've seen slow, slow minimal increases in ridership since April, maybe 1,000 to 2,000 a month. We saw 20,000 rides in June. But year over year, we're 37, almost 38% down in, across the whole system. And Husky Line by themselves is really the majority of that at 37% of the decrease. TransVAC has done a, a good job. And I think the people are a little bit more welcome to the paratransit concept because you have a one-on-one visit here. You have an individual who's a driver and you have one passenger. And TransVAC has taken the appropriate approach of one driver and one passenger, which limits your ability to not be around an exorbitant amount of people. But on the fixed routes, it's really a, a challenge because now you have one driver and we've limited it or done our best to limit it to maybe 10 or 12 people on a bus at one time. And so now people are less likely to ride the bus because they don't want to be exposed in a small area. And that creates the same challenge for a driver. And I'll, I'll address the Husky Line hiring mentality in just a moment. But trying to find someone to come in and put themselves in a small area with people they don't know for 16 hours a day is a challenge. And, and TransVAC has done an excellent job in maintaining their drivers throughout all of this. And, and it's a different, it's a different system in the sense of the one-on-one. Where on the Husky Line, those of you that are familiar, they ebb and flow with the semesters of the university. So their system goes from needing 50 drivers in the semester to needing maybe 20 in summer. And so drivers are hired knowing that there's most likely not going to have work in the summer and the winter. And TransDev has always relied on being able to try to obtain students before they would leave from NIU to let them know that we would like to have plans in place to keep you here over the summer to try to have you ready to go in the fall. And so 2020 has thrown a loop, really thrown us for a loop in a variety of ways. And the hiring challenge is one. And being able to get those students before they left was the big one. And then the individuals that typically would work over the summer, those most highest in seniority in your top 20 are typically older individuals that are more susceptible to health problems that have opted not to go in and work and, and be in the vehicle. So I, I definitely would agree that we, I've been very forthcoming with TransDev that I expect that these contractual obligations are met. However, I do think that it is a challenge and I know this is a challenge in a variety of different areas. But I, I think that my most confident statement is that they are doing their best. I, I would agree that there was a little bit of stalling and optimism that was on their part in June in thinking that they were going to be able to meet this 250-hour deadline in August. But it became very evident when I went to Mr. Nicholas on June, excuse me, July 9th, that things weren't going as well as they had anticipated. And it takes 120 hours minimum to drop, train a new driver. And when you can only limit yourself to one person per driver, it really slows down the whole process. So I know that they are committed to it. They're flying 10 people in to ensure that the service on the 24th is met with no problems because we realize that that is important and needs to be met. And I believe that the schedule that we have created is efficient and almost meets, I would say, 80% of the frequency needs across the city in terms of making sure people have access to where they need to go to, especially those residents, or excuse me, students in the residence halls in Echo Park. But we also don't know what's going to happen. We don't know what things look like in a month. And I've been very transparent with Mr. Heckman and Mr. Nicholas and Mr. Strub that we may see the demand that we put in the residence halls is unnecessary and then we can adjust this and move this. So I, I think we're doing our best with what we know. And it's, we'll be ready to go at a moment's notice and TransDev knows that, that we need to flex however we need to, to ensure that that, those passengers get what they need.
I think what staff is looking for here is consensus that the proposed reduction in service, which would kick in on August 24th, makes sense. And at this point, there's consensus that we ought to move, move forward and, and allow this to happen. Alderman Fanukin.
You know, I probably know better than most, other than Tracy, that how difficult it is to get CDL drivers. However, I'm really concerned about the residence hall service really basically ending at 10 o'clock instead of midnight. I realize that the number 11 has been created, but with the amount of ground that looks to cover it, means at best it's going to be gone by once an hour. So I'm really concerned about the residence halls and some of the Greek row coverage from 10 p.m. to midnight. I'm hoping that, you know, something can be done to address that. You know, I look at the number of, number of the two route, the number of the two routes that are out there. And I would think that maybe one of those other ones could be cut so we could cover those couple of hours at night and just better shuffle the service. Because I don't think the demand is necessarily going to be that high during the day, considering that, yes, every available bed is going to be filled in the residence halls, but it's only one person in a room, so no, no two. So the numbers there are going to be a lot lower than what we are traditionally used to. So I'd like to, hopefully that in conversations with the university and with Bill, that we can address those last couple of hours at night, rather than in essence forcing people to walk, no matter the weather, no matter the conditions, you know, particularly, I don't necessarily want to say particularly in Greek row, but that is an area of concern. Thank you.
So this is one of those time slots, if you will, that could be tweaked, as you suggest, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Alderman Fanukin. Any other comments regarding this? Do I sense that we have consensus then to, to Marcus Cox and our City Manager to move forward with this? Yeah, Alderman Smith?
Marcus, is this the time we start looking at our overall service maps of the city? I know Alderman McAdams and I have talked about some uncovered areas. I mean, I, I feel the calls from the Knowles that, you know, can we get in there? They don't want to walk all the way out to Annie Glen Road. So maybe is this the time to just look at the system as a whole and make the adjustments? Is this, is this our opportunity, I guess?
Yes, sir. And, and I would absolutely agree that that is the, you're, you're right. Now is the time with the limitations that we have in place because of the pandemic that a lot of places are saying things that we had put off or originally planned for 2021, 2022 are now becoming into fruition as it's a little bit easier to make that transition now. So absolutely.
Thanks very much.
Any other discussion or comments on this? Okay, you've got the green light to go on that, Alderman, or City Manager Nicholas and Marcus? Okay, City Manager Nicholas?
Because we don't have anybody from TransDev here tonight, what I'd like to do is see if it's possible to juggle, also address Alderman Fanukin's concern. And if for some reason we can't, I think we'll bring this back to you and let you know where we stand. If we can, then I, we can communicate to you what we found out and if it's possible to find a different, slightly different kind of compromise. But I hear your concerns and we, we can't at this point say we're going to deliver because we haven't talked to TransDev. Let's see what we can do. If you're agreeable to that, that's how we'll proceed.
Yep. Seems like we are, yes. Alderman Verbic?
And then maybe we find out an update from NIU on their late-night ride to, to address Alderman Fanukin's concerns. Are they offering that service? What is that level of service? Because I know it's become more commonplace for college campuses to offer that.
And hopefully we have some life in recreational, you know, hospitality businesses that will encourage people to stay out a little bit later in 10 o'clock and, and then rides will be needed, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's move along now to resolutions. Item J on your agenda. Number one, Resolution 2020-087, authorizing payment to Irving Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $45,000 for the concrete reconstruction of Palmer Court in conjunction with the Egyptian Theater renovation project. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved by Alderman Fanukin, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas?
Thank you. I, I tried to do in two paragraphs, it might have been a short story. Those, all of you know that, beginning over a year ago when the Egyptian project was finally getting some legs under it, we were seeing the general contractor work in the alley, which had been a concrete alley, not in the best shape, but concrete, which held up pretty well with the garbage trucks and semi-trucks, delivery trucks that came through there. But the idea was to have the foundation for the new addition end about, well, end where it is now, but have an overdig of only about a foot or so. And we would fill that in with asphalt and of city responsibility. While the, the discovery of, of power lines and other utilities that no one had mapped, go back to the beginning of the community back in the 1870s and 80s. Basically, I said it blew up the surface. Almost every square inch of that surface had to be removed for one utility or another, including the city and the sanitary district. So we were left with having to rebuild the whole alley. We, we looked at pricing on the asphalt side. We figured we'd pick it up as we do our street maintenance program this year. In fact, that was discussed very briefly as we were going over street maintenance in the spring. But it's just not going to hold up. We had, we had a conversation with the Egyptian Theater. They were willing to pay the general contractor who was already working in the alley to break up and remove the rest of the remaining concrete and to work on the subgrade. And then we asked that general contractor who was pouring sidewalks and, and retaining walls and other things in the area to give us a price. It was an aggressive price, which we appreciated, for paving the alley, which was done. Normally I would have brought this to you, but literally the, they were lined up to do the concrete. So I took it on my authority to say, I think we can get this covered. And so I'm back to you. There is a, an allocation that's in Fund 400, which is our Home Row Sales, or Home Row Fuel Tax Fund. And we ask for your support for this reimbursement.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this, so with explanation by our City Manager. Any other questions or comments?
Just one right in that area. Bill, when will that strip of the street be paved that still travels?
Yeah, yeah. Every day I get a call about that, as you might imagine. It's, it's rolled in as the alley was going to be with the street maintenance program. We were told it might be last week. This week is now, the week is supposed to happen. Zach Gill, our city engineer, who's a point person with the contractor, has made it abundantly clear that we want that done and affects how the hillside can cater to outside dining. There's dust every time a car goes through there. I know it, I hear it, I'm working it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven I, one A.
Thank you. That resolution is approved as presented. Number two, Resolution 2020-088, authorizing an expenditure from the local allocation of rebuilt Illinois bond revenues for bridge replacement engineering in the amount of $650,000. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Smith. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked about this briefly at the last regular meeting. This is a standard IDOT resolution that has to follow the Council's willingness to dedicate the, those, those additional funds to the bridge work. And we ask for your support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Number three, Resolution 2020-089, approving a settlement agreement and the acceptance of a deed in lieu of foreclosure for 1015 Black Hawk Drive. That's Campus Cinema. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas, have you heard of Campus Cinema?
I'm, I'm going to just set this up briefly and John Donahue, our city attorney, is going to bring it home. I want to thank John and Matt Rose, his associate, for some tireless work for, really, the whole time they've been city attorney on this. And it's, it's a little challenging to appreciate this entirely. So I'm going to ask our city attorney to walk you through it. It's a good deal.
Thank you, Manager Nicholas. Yes, we've been in court many times on this and many settlement conferences with the judge and the property owner and their attorney. And we're finally at the, what I hope is the end of the road. Under the settlement agreement, we will get a lien on the property in the amount of $400,000. And why that's important, because it, it means that we can get what's called a deed in lieu of foreclosure, which will transfer the property from its current ownership to the city. By getting a deed in lieu of foreclosure, there are statutory provisions which will allow us to go to the county and obligate the county to void any past due prior unpaid property taxes on that property. So in other words, when you obtain title to it, we will not have to pay any of the back taxes that, that do remain unpaid on, on this property. Once we get the deed in lieu of foreclosure, the, we will then transfer in an amount in equal to $375,000 to the attorney's, the owner's attorney's client fund account, trust account. And that will only be distributed to him as follows. He will get half of it when the building is torn down. And he will get the remaining half when the entire demolition is completed, which means all the piles of junk and garbage are removed from the site and it's returned to a vacant, a vacant lot. And of course, by that time, we will also have the deed and ownership of the property.
And then if I may, then the city owns, would own from the corner at Hillcrest and Blackhawk up to the Fanatico's Restaurant. Because as you know, we did a land swap for a parcel just to the north of this Campus Cinema property. And then that puts in a position, us in a position to seek development proposals for what is a sizable parcel in a key. We, we all know how important it is to, to, to work on redevelopment in this area. And, and then I, I'm pretty confident, we, we've had some interest, you know, it's in an opportunity zone. There has been some interest and I think it'll be even more interesting if that building is not there. So we strongly recommend support for this.
Yeah, it's good to see that progress. Any discussion? Roll call?
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Thank you. That resolution passes. Number four, Resolution 2020-090, authorizing a bar and hospitality liquor license for El Hemedor Mexican Grill LLC located at 260 East Lincoln Highway. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Under the settlement agreement, we will get a lien on the property in the amount of $400,000. And why that's important, because it means that we can get what's called a deed in lieu of foreclosure, which will transfer the property from its current ownership to the city. By getting a deed in lieu of foreclosure, there are statutory provisions which will allow us to go to the county and obligate the county to void any past due prior unpaid property taxes on that property. So in other words, when you obtain title to it, we will not have to pay any of the back taxes that do remain unpaid on this property. Once we get the deed in lieu of foreclosure, the, we will then transfer an amount equal to $375,000 to the attorney's, the owner's attorney's client fund account, trust account, and that will only be distributed to him as follows. He will get half of it when the building is torn down, and he will get the remaining half when the entire demolition is completed, which means all the piles of junk and garbage are removed from the site and it's returned to a vacant lot. And of course, by that time, we will also have the deed and ownership of the property.
And then if I may, then the city owns, would own from the corner at Hillcrest and Blackhawk up to the Fanatico's Restaurant, because as you know, we did a land swap for a parcel just to the north of this Campus Cinema property. And then that puts in a position, us in a position to seek development proposals for what is a sizable parcel in a key, we all know how important it is to work on redevelopment in this area. And then, I'm pretty confident, we've had some interest, you know, it's in an opportunity zone, there has been some interest, and I think it'll be even more interesting if that building is not there. So we strongly recommend support for this.
Yeah, it's good to see that progress. Any discussion? Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Thank you. That resolution passes. Number four, Resolution 2020-090, authorizing a bar and hospitality liquor license for El Hemedor Mexican Grill LLC located at 260 East Lincoln Highway. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. As I say in the background, this is a project, obviously we're aware of it as a Tiff funded project, but it's also a project that's near completion. The city's approval is a provisional one, because we don't, they do not yet have a state license, but this allows them to apply for their state of Illinois liquor license, and the liquor commissioner and acting police chief have supported this application, and although there's some build out, building out yet to finish in the next couple of weeks, their aim is to be open sometime around Labor Day, and that would be welcome in the downtown, so we urge your support.
Any discussion on this? If not, roll call, please.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
I see some of the brain trust from El Hemedor are here. We appreciate your interest and your continued investment into our community. Thank you. Okay, now we move to ordinances. We have no ordinances under, for second reading this evening. Item L, ordinances first reading, we do have a couple. One is ordinance 2020-050, amending Chapter Four, Police Department, Section 4.13, Police Pension Board, as it pertains to the residency of members of the Police Pension Board appointed by the mayor. I'd entertain a motion, please. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. I'd like City Manager Nicholas, if he would like to, to speak to this item, and I do have a couple of comments.
I'll defer to you, Mayor.
Okay, if you recall, a couple of weeks ago, I asked for the reappointment of Joyce Stupesia to the Police Pension Board, and shortly before the meeting that night, I was obligated, after learning that we may have a residency requirement issue, I was obligated to remove that from the agenda, and I appreciate the work of our city attorneys, Matt Rose and John Donahue, on this, and I was pleased to learn that while the Illinois pension code does not expressly prohibit the appointment of non-residents as members of the municipality's Police Pension Board, the best thing, on the advice of our attorneys, was to bring this back and amend our Chapter Four ordinance as it pertains to residency. Alderman Joyce Stupesia has left the community, she has indicated an interest in returning to the community, she's very, very knowledgeable about Police Pension Board matters, having been the village president of Bella Park for a number of years prior to moving to DeKalb, and she would certainly like to continue. So if we can approve this, then at our next meeting, we can bring that reappointment back for the council's consideration. That make sense? Alderman Fanouken.
I'm just going to voice my opinion here, that I really, truly believe that members of our Police Pension Board and for most of our committees and commissions where we've not made specific positions eligible as part of that, that they need to be residents of the city, and I'm going to vote no on this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Alderman Morris.
I suppose along those lines, I think we want to make sure that we're not making a habit of this.
Oh, absolutely.
I think that in an isolated instance, I can support it, but I think typically, we wouldn't want to do this.
I respect that opinion, I certainly respect Alderman Fanouken's comments. Believe me, I am very, very picky Unish to myself when I look at appointments and reappointments, et cetera, and I realize this, and that particular position, Police Pension Board, requires quite a bit of training, quite a bit of knowledge of the pension arena as it relates to police departments, and she has done such a good job, and so that's why I didn't have any problem with bringing her reappointment, so, but to your point, yes, this is something that we certainly don't want to make a habit of.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make it clear, this is not a vote of anti-Joyce. I know Joyce, I like Joyce, I know what her background is, so it's definitely not a vote against Joyce herself, it's just against the concept.
I understand, Alderman Fanouken, thank you. Any other comments? Alderman Verbic.
Would it help or be possible if we gave her a date certain to move back to DeKalb? In other words, you're appointed, but you've got six months or one year, and if you don't move back, then we're going to move on.
We could. I think it muddies the water at this point, but yeah, we could. Yeah, I mean, I, we can certainly let Joyce know that we feel that her moving back into the community is important to this council, important enough that we would ask her to do that, and that, I can't recall, perhaps Ruth, you might remember when that reappointment would run through, but we could probably put a date certain on it, and I think Joyce would even probably be comfortable enough with that, just giving her enough leeway to, you know, to make a decision.
I would support it with a six-month time limit to move back to DeKalb.
Okay. Can you be a little wishy-washy on the six months? I mean, six months or, or thereabouts, yeah, a certain kind of, I never had so much fun with a reappointment. Yes, Alderman Morris.
And I would second that. I would second a, you know, six to 12-month expectation of her returning, and at that point, then we would reappoint someone else.
Okay. Very good. Any discussion?
If I may, if we were to go that route, I would, instead of saying six to 12 months, I would say the first meeting in May 2021, because that's when the new council would be sworn in, and I think that'd be an appropriate time.
Very good.
Okay. So what we're doing is to move on this amendment with the provision that the mayor talked to the appointee or the suggested appointee with a provision that would be very important to this city, that she make a decision as it relates to residency within the parameters of the city of DeKalb by May, by the police pension board meeting in May 2021.
No, actually, a city council meeting is what I suggested.
City council meeting.
But I don't know if that's actually been formalized into an amendment yet.
Okay. Any further discussion? Alderman Morris.
So I move formally to amend it as we have it and suggest that we add the wording that Joyce Stupesia be appointed to the Police Pension Board and that be allowed to take place, provided that she moves back within the city limits by the city council meeting of May 2021.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Morris and seconded by Alderman Verbic. A city attorney, Donahue, does that skew this particular request of an ordinance change to the degree that it does not align itself properly or not?
No, I think that's fine. This is the first reading.
Okay.
So I think we'll bring it back next time with some verbiage that will satisfy that motion and that request.
Okay, very good. Alderman, or excuse me, City Manager Nicholas.
I concur, I think we should bring this back. Council can proceed to propose and vote on amending this, but bring it back, because I think you need to talk to Mrs. Stupesia about this.
Okay, so we're voting on the amendment. We're, yeah, we're going to vote on that amendment, that amendment was made by Alderman Morris and seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I, one N.
Moving along.
Number two, ordinance 2020-051, amending Chapter Eight, City Officials and Employees Ethics Act as it pertains to the Workplace Transparency Act. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Who made that motion? Alderman Fanouken made the motion, Alderman Favor seconded that. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There are two pieces to this which you outlined in your background which deserve council attention, and one is an amendment, proposed amendment, that would require all city employees and officials to complete the annual sexual harassment prevention training, which is required by the act. We hardly support that. Second piece is a proposed amended language that provides that allegations of sexual harassment made against an elected official of the city by another elected official of the city shall, there shall be some reporting process for that, and there's a default here to the city ethics office advisor, which is the city manager, and I do not recommend that we go there, because I work for you, and there are some potential conflicts here. So it would be some outside or third party, and I had just suggested, just to start the conversation, that we do have, and our city attorney works for the council, we do have a labor attorney of an independent firm, which is, which we work with, sometimes in collective bargaining or extraordinary unusual types of labor management questions. That's another entity that is under contract, and you may decide that's not correct either, but we're looking for some guidance on that, otherwise we support the idea of the training for all city officials.
Alderman Morris.
Could I recommend that HR be the person contacted in this case? That's what you're looking for, right? Is that recommend?
Yeah, an idea. I think if you would consider this, the HR person works for the city manager, the city manager works for you, I mean, there's not many degrees of separation there, so it's important, probably be somebody outside. It's not going to be the state's attorney, it's not the path, so, John?
Yeah, I'd like some legal opinion on this.
It is a rather difficult, because what happened here is Springfield had a well-known problem with having sexual harassment issues and with, you know, among their female and male legislators, and they solved this problem in part for themselves by doing this kind of process, but they have independent investigators and ethics people that can do this stuff and maintain their independence. It does put a person in a very unusual spot. If you were to have one elected official complaining about another elected official, it does put the person looking at Bill or myself or anyone in a very difficult, or the HR person, so I think the closest, probably the best idea would be to take it for someone who's further removed and is more independent, who doesn't work at a, as a regular level with the council members involved and have them do it, and someone like your labor attorney, who you may call on from time to time to provide this type of thing, and it's kind of things that they normally would often do anyway, and it's, being labor attorneys, it's the world that they live in, it's the things that they normally would do on a somewhat of irregular basis, to be familiar with those laws, analyze those laws, and be able to render better opinions on those issues.
Could that be our, could that be our city attorney? Could that be you or Matt?
Yeah, we could do that if that's the.
I mean, you could move it to a, to a, to a legal attorney, or a.
Yeah, we could certainly do that, although it puts us in a rather awkward position as well. I can tell you, it'd be like the, probably the last thing I'd actually be involved in, because it's awkward when you have two members of the same elected body and you represent the body as a whole, so having someone further removed is a better idea, not only for the person doing the work, but also just for the optics of the way it looks for the community as well.
Yeah. City Manager Nicholas.
The city has, for a number of years now, I believe five or six years, maybe more, had a, just a retainer agreement with Ben Gert and the company that, or the practice that he works with, and they provided service when it comes to a variety of things that pop up on occasion, and they're not in regular contact with the council or with me, but they're sort of there as needed, and I can tell you that the firm that Ben works with is one of the firms we considered for city attorney, they're a well-known northern Illinois practice, impeccable credentials, this is what they do, they do this with other communities. That would be the first place I think we could look, and then we'd be in full compliance with this act.
Alderman Fanouken.
Hi, I'm just thinking, do, would it be easier for anybody who wanted to make a complaint to at least have an in-house source to make the original complaint and then have that referred to the outside company for actual investigation? So let's say whether, let's say Carolyn claimed that I had harassed her, all right, so she wants to report that. We could have it set up where she could go to HR or to our attorneys and then just refer that out to the investigating firm. bit easier for one of us if we were harassed to make that move forward. Like, it's hard to talk, hard enough to talk to somebody you know, let alone somebody you don't know regarding this, I think.
That makes, that makes sense, and we could certainly do that.
Would you be comfortable with that, City Manager Nicholas?
Yeah, I'm thinking about the contingencies and possibilities. Let's say the harassment is profound, and it affects how we set up here. It might, there may be, there may be a reason why the city manager has to get involved in that, just to provide for continuation. But I think, I think it's fine. I think we set up the city attorney as being the go-to person. Then that person will not be able to tell me, I assume. So this will be going on, there will be an investigation going on I wouldn't be aware of. But I guess I would hazard that, whatever inconveniences that may cause, and how I can serve you in order to maintain your confidentiality. Because it would go from you to John to this attorney. And I would be carved out of that.
Is this a situation where we need to amend the, the Chapter 8 ordinance?
How about, this is one, it's always difficult to do this on the fly. How about if we bring back a refined document that takes into consideration what's been suggested here and...
Alderman Favor.
So if I'm thinking about it, it's, I mean, what we're deciding is just, but it's going to be the training that we receive or that's, you know, part of the process. That's where, I don't think that has to be put into a ordinance. But just that, I mean, we're just naming the parties. But the process can be part of the training that's given to everyone.
I think what's expected, though, is that we do have a process. By law, I'd expect it's frozen at the city manager.
At the state level, they have an inspector general who is set up for those types of things at state level, you know, with all the senators and House of Representatives. Yeah, we don't have that. So we have to come up with some alternative measure to do that.
Correct. And our, we've already said it's our labor attorney, that you'll be the contact.
Right.
But that's the process. The person is the labor attorney. The process is go to the city attorney. So the process will be trained on. But the person is the labor attorney. That's what we're voting on.
Right.
Unless you want to, but again, to me, it's the process that we're going to learn, that we're going to be trained in, is going to the city attorney. Although, other ones I've seen is you can report it to a peer. You can report it to HR, or you can report it to your manager. Well, we don't have managers, but...
I think there should be some way that there are two people that are options for who you tell. And in all the experiences that I've had in the military, all of the processes that I've seen, there's never just one person that you can go to because that becomes the weakest link instantly. So what you need is a process where you have two options of who to go to. And generally speaking, it would be most ideal to have two different genders for those people, so that it's very comfortable for anyone of any gender to reach out to someone. And I think that's all that I'm concerned about, that there are two different options in the first step in the link.
Okay. This, and really, this is a two-pronged ordinance consideration. One is the reporting, which we're discussing now. The other is the training. And in looking at this Department of Human Rights from the state of Illinois, the document that they presented, I don't know if you had a chance to look through that, City Attorney Donahue, is there any timeframe associated with this?
Well, the training, the training...
Do we need to do this by such and such a date, or?
We're behind already.
Well, the training should be done by, by January 1st.
Okay, so there is, time is of the essence somewhat.
Yeah, but as far as having a process to deal with the elected official harassment on another elected official, that's something we do need to put in place.
I think further, another thing that I've seen done is that you have two options when you report. Also, that your report can be totally closed, or your report can be not closed. So that it's just you dealing with the issue with, say, if I go to the HR person, and the HR person refers me to the outside source that's the labor attorney, so that I can make my complaint directly to them, but retain it as 100% private the entire way. So that perhaps I want to deal with this in my own way and not necessarily make a public issue of it, too. So I think those two options are critical as well.
And it would be a violation of law if the ethics advisor or a follow-on person were to divulge this in the public arena unless or until it became a matter of public record. Actually, the law as written is, is, is pretty sharp, what's in your background. But, but what was left hanging was who that quote, and I'll read it here, qualified individual or entity would be who would perform the independent review of these allegations. So in my view, I don't know if the council agrees, but I think that's the hole we have right now in this process.
Based on our discussion this evening on this proposed amendment to this Workplace Transparency Act, is there, was there, is there enough there that you and John can work together to bring something back?
Yes.
At our next meeting?
Yes, we'll bring it back.
Does that make sense?
Could we go ahead and then pass it on first reading tonight and then change it as necessary at the next meeting?
The question is, can we go ahead and pass this as, we have a motion on the floor in a second to pass this and then bring it back as part of the next discussion on second reading with whatever suggested changes might come out of the discussion between our city attorney and our city manager?
I think we may be a little far afield from giving different ideas that have been put out to pass anything tonight.
All right.
So I like to, I think we're best served by taking another stab at it and bringing it back to council, making sure you're comfortable with it before we then take any kind of step.
All right, thank you, John.
I agree. And I will say, we don't have an HR director. We have two employees that work in the HR division, and one of those is moving on. So, and the remaining person has a person of many years of experience, but she works on benefits and so forth and doesn't work in this area. So I think we, my recommendation is when we bring this back, that the city manager remains as, as is currently the case, the ethics advisor, and that I pass this through. I'm a pass-through, basically. Because I think you should think about these contingencies. If there, this isn't happening. But it has happened in other places. We read about it periodically in larger cities and so forth, where there are issues. Sometimes it could be pushing and shoving. I don't mean, it doesn't have to be of a romantic nature. And, and the city manager is in the position to provide for the security of one or several people and use all of the authority that is available, whether it's the police department or something else. So that's what I do every day. That's part of my job description. I do that with city employees who come to me and say, I'm having a problem with so-and-so. All I'm asking in this case is that I be your pass-through to a third party who you've never met, but who I deal with on a, on a fairly regular basis.
Would you suggest, then, that we, that we move to postpone?
Yes.
Action on this?
Yes, as the city attorney said. But I just want to spell out what I think we're bringing back to you, so you know.
But I guess...
Alderman Perkins.
So, in the course of your homework, then, are you going to do some benchmarking with what other cities and municipalities are doing in this way?
Yeah.
Because we can't be the only one dealing with this. And it may be easier, rather than trying to reinvent the wheel, you know?
And we, and we did some of that, but I'll let John or Matt, whoever's sitting here, explain what that benchmarking revealed.
Often it just, default tends to be it falls on us. I've had a lot of very difficult and sensitive conversations over the years, and we could certainly do that. But we're trying to get the best solution as possible that has the best optics for the public perception as, as well.
I, I have to insist, there must be two people. It makes absolutely no sense to have one. That, that makes no sense.
What would the second person do? I'm just trying to...
Uh, no. Okay, so, so the first link, so say, for example, you're the ethics advisor, and I have a problem with you directly, but you're my pass...
That's different, that's different, yeah.
Right, it's different, but it could be the situation. But you're my pass-through to get to the labor attorney or whomever.
Then I think you go straight to the, to the city attorney. Is that what, would that be agreeable?
What I'm saying is that the first point of contact, there needs to be more than one option. So that if I don't feel comfortable telling you about my problems, I have one other person.
I hear you.
That I can have as the alternate. And theoretically, ideally, it would be of a different gender. And I mean, I realize we have limited staff. I realize that. But you can have an, what's it called? Like a, like a backup ethics advisor, or the secondary ethics advisor. And I've always experienced, in years of, of military time, that there was always two options, so that if the first option was not acceptable, you could choose the other one.
I'd entertain a motion, then, to postpone this, postpone any action on this until our next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finuchin, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any further discussion on the motion to postpone? City Clerk Fizikas, roll call, please.
Sorry about that. Perkins.
Okay, yes.
McAdams. McAdams? Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris. Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Action on that ordinance is postponed until our next regular meeting. Moving right along. Item number three, ordinance 2020-052, amending Chapter 52, Offenses Against Public Peace, Safety, and Morals by adding Section 52.05, Criminal Housing Management. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. As I indicated in the background, I hope that we will just take this on first reading.
Right.
The proposal here is to create another rung of more, I think, assertive category of prosecution, which can be brought to bear on chronic abusers of the, the standards that the council has set in various ways, crime-free lease and building codes that you adopt and so forth, vis a vis the tenants that they are supposed to be serving. And we have, I purposely called out Hunter Properties. They, they are the, the poster child for neglectful management at best, and in many cases, the type of egregious stewardship that we have spent the time working up this, this particular ordinance to contend with. And I, I don't have to give you the litany of our experience with them over the last couple of years, both from the standpoint of the impact that their management style and their, their, the fact that they run away from making the right choices about how they, they work with their, their tenants. That, that, that puts pressure not only on city departments, but on the neighborhoods in which their properties are found, and the, the patterns of, of the way families would prefer to move around, to enter and leave their apartments. They don't feel safe. They don't feel that their apartments are well taken care of and so forth. So in state statute, there is something called criminal housing management, and, and it is a felony offense. And we are aiming in this to take control over how we prosecute by making this a city offense, which doesn't put it at the felony level, but it does raise this to a higher level, and higher fines are possible. And we feel the aggressive application of this can make a difference. We spelled out in the background why we think that to be the case, what the exact terms are. There is a, a explanation of the various points, six points, in fact, that would, would apply in this case. And this would be a civil offense. There would not be a sentence of imprisonment for a violation, but the standard of recklessness has been raised, and, and we think this, this is something that we should pursue. So it does potentially have an impact, though, even on the best of our landlords, if not carefully wordsmithed. And there are, in the draft that's before you that was published last week, some areas which I think arguably could be tweaked. What we're looking at here are those extraordinary and repetitive violations of the public codes, of building codes, health codes, and so forth. What does extraordinary mean? Extraordinary, one person's eyes might be incidental in some other person's eyes. So we need to do a little more qualitative, quantitative definition of what things such as that mean. And I met with, wanted to at least have a meeting with the executive committee of the DeKalb Area Rental Association, and I did that today. They are supportive of the general concept, and they would like us to spend a little more time working up some of those details that I just touched on. And believe that the fines are not the, not a question of concern, provided that they're properly applied. And so I'd like to hear what the council feels. And then with your information, we can work a little bit more with the interested parties, both rental associations and tenant associations, to the extent that they exist in an organized way in our community, and then come back with something that's a better document.
If we feel supportive of this ordinance, what the city manager is asking us to do is to consider it first reading only. We would bring it back. It is, there's no secret as to why this ordinance is here tonight. There's no secret as to who and what corporation has precipitated the fact that we're talking about this this evening. Now, that is exacerbated by, as the background material suggests, the COVID situation, which brings into further elements of unsavory conditions or unsavory behavior, I guess you'd say. So I, I appreciate the fact that our city manager met with Dara and, and has got some consensus from that group that while they're not again this ordinance, they'd like us to have further discussion on it. And we could do that if, in fact, we would support this ordinance positively tonight, but in first reading only. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman Favor.
I think, I guess my concern, obviously I'm for the ordinance. My concern is that we have to apply it equally across the board. Because obviously if we're not fair in the application, that's going to come back and be a liability for the city. With saying that, I'm concerned that we might, as was said, we might catch up, you know, a decent landlord who has a property violation. And, you know, so I guess I'm just concerned, I understand the reasoning for it, I know why we're here. And, you know, I'm for it, but it's just, I guess, getting good input from Dara and the rest of the tenant associations would be good if we're going forward.
So are you suggesting, Alderman Favor, that you be supportive of approval of this under first reading with the provision that we do take a look at it and involve other parties and see what the public thinks on this particular proposal? Alderman, thank you. Alderman Morris?
So if I understand correctly, it sounds like Dara is looking for more quantifiable measures to clear up any confusion?
Yes.
Okay. And I think I agree with that, I think it makes perfect sense. I think we do need to have clear measures for what is really criminal housing management. I am thrilled and thank you so much for bringing this forward. I really appreciate this because, you know, I was searching very hard trying to figure out what the solution was and I didn't come across this. So this is really very forward-thinking, great idea.
Keep in mind that one of the, you know, this is unlike your usual typical property management issue where the fact your light is out and your exit sign means you're liable. This requires proof of a knowledge proof. It's reckless, it's greater than negligence, just being negligence isn't sufficient. It requires a reckless standard, which is defined as any act or omission which shows an actual or deliberate intention to endanger the health or safety of any person or which, if not intentional, shows an utter indifference to conscious disregard for the health or safety of that person. What we've thought about internally is, obviously it's a standard that's higher than negligence. We've thought about possibly adding some language in this that would make it a defense to say that you have in good faith and you've operated an inspection program on a regular basis and you've operated that program and you missed it. You know, that's not really an intentional or reckless act, that's more of a negligent act. And have that as maybe some defense language that would keep people satisfied, you know. And of course, they're worried about, there's always prosecutorial discretion in these types of things. And obviously you're right, it does need to apply to everybody and will apply to everybody. But I think you have, the good landlords are worried about, so is this elevate? If I'm caught with a light out and an exit sign, is it elevate me to a higher level than anyone? No, that's not the intent. But I think we need, can work out some language that will give those interests a higher comfort level that show on paper that that's not the intent of the statute. So I think we can address some of those concerns and some of those worries as well.
I think some of what I'm looking for in this is, you know, I've contacted my property manager three times with no response. You know, I have no lock on my door, I have, so I want to see, I want to see the number of contacts probably on there. And, you know, we want to be able to sort of describe what due diligence is on the part of the resident and say, okay, this resident, you know, if they contact the property manager, you know, three times in twenty, you know, in forty-eight hours, is that due diligence or do we say seventy-two hours, you know what I'm saying? So really that's what I think I want to see is those timelines in there and the number of contacts that we expect a property manager to respond within. And obviously Dara would be a perfect person to verify those with, to what they think is reasonable.
That's exactly where we want to go. And you recall a year ago, over a year ago now, we had a number of arson attempts. There were mattresses that were left in the hallways that, and one of them eventually created enough fuel when it was more intentionally lit to create the fire that had people jumping out of windows and some people were cut as they were jumping out of windows and so forth. That's extreme negligence. On the other hand, if a couple of people bent on mischief go through and they pull the hand alarms and shoot off some fire extinguishers and run out the door, that's not criminal negligence, particularly when a landlord just as incensed as the tenants are and comes over and within a day or so gets it fixed. So there's that wide difference. And we want to, as you were saying and you're both saying, I think, we want to make sure we protect the people who are doing their best and having conversations on a regular basis with their tenants. And then what we have with the Hunter model, which is entirely on the other extreme of the spectrum.
The way I word, the state statute is really kind of operates on an after-the-fact basis. It could be a crime, but there has to be that dangerous condition. And that dangerous condition needs to have actually caused an injury to someone. We would like to have a program which tries to get involved before that injury occurs. Obviously, it's not a felony, it's not a misdemeanor under the local ordinance. We're trying to act more proactively to try and get some resolution of some of these issues before those problems occur.
At a level of fines that are going to catch the attention of anybody, whether scrupled or not.
Any further discussion? Alderman Smith.
Bill, this is great, my, how are we going to enforce it? We can't handle a staffing level now, I mean, what, I mean, I think all of us would like to see this, but.
How come, it's one of those things, how can we not enforce it?
No, I agree.
Yeah. It's a fair question, but I think the response, I was trying to be facetious, it's just, there are just some things we have to do that's part of our job.
Just throwing it out there, I just.
No. And we can't afford as a community to back off of this practice. We just can't do it, we give up. So I'm with you, but it's just one, you just get up and go again.
Yeah, to do nothing would be a dereliction of the duty of this city council, in my opinion. Any further discussion?
Thank you, we'll bring it back.
Roll call.
I'll try to do it by the twenty-four, but I can't guarantee it, we may have some more discussion.
Roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That ordinance is passed on first reading, bring us back another good one, guys. Okay, number four, ordinance 2020-053, approving a first amendment to the amended and restated Park Eighty-Eight Development Agreement to remove the 3.3 acre public use site in the Park Eighty-Eight Development located along Macon Drive. We had a public hearing on this this evening and we would like now to have a motion to approve this ordinance. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas, please.
It's just what we talked about in the public hearing, as you said, Mayor, and we recommend your support.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Do we want to waive second reading on this?
Move to approve, we move to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Perkins, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you, that ordinance is approved. What a myriad of topics tonight, wow. Now we move along to reports and communications. This allows our city council members the opportunity to make a report or communicate anything they'd like along with our city clerk and city manager. We'll start, as we usually do, with our first ward, Alderman Carolyn McAdam, Carolyn Morris.
No report.
Alderman Fanouken, second ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate Northern Illinois University President Dr. Lisa Freeman and Athletic Director Sean Fraser on the courageous efforts in leading the Mid-American Conference in the decision to postpone fall sports. The numbers of infections of COVID-19 continue to rise. It is imperative that citizens do everything possible to limit exposure, wash your hands, keep your social distance, and continue to wear your mask properly. We see numbers in eleven counties here in Illinois that have risen to the point where they are almost going to have to go back into a earlier phase and endure a more severe lockdown. I think it's important that everybody realize that and we don't want that to happen here.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Fanouken. Alderman Smith, third world.
The only thing I have is I'll be having a third ward Zoom meeting on August nineteenth from 6:30 to 8:30. Watch the website and paper for details once we have the Zoom information to be published. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Fourth ward, Alderman Greg Perkins.
No report.
Alderman McAdams, fifth ward.
So in our position as Alderman, we get a lot of phone calls from residents about a lot of different things. And the IML often says that we should not step in in intersquabbles between neighbors. But I was brought on an issue that we might want to discuss. The United States military has made an effort to ban the Confederate flag. And I had a resident who moved in recently, within the last year, and she is uncomfortable with her neighbor's Confederate flag. And I don't know what we can do, I don't know if that's something that the board would support, but I would like to entertain the idea that we address that issue and discuss that issue and maybe follow the lead of our United States military in banning the Confederate flag in the city of DeKalb.
Thank you. Alderman Verbic, sixth ward.
No report.
Alderman Favor, seventh ward.
The only thing I wanted to say was, you know, we had proclaimed DeKalb as a bicycle-friendly community, not only bicycles, but runners and joggers out there. As you're driving your vehicle, make sure you stop behind the crosswalk, not in the middle of the crosswalk. And if you could, please don't park your car across the sidewalk in your driveway. Either be on your driveway or in the street. I see a lot of these instances while I'm out and about, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. This is dovetailing somewhat on Alderman Fanouken's, this quote came from Sports Illustrated over the weekend. "If it comes to a complete postponement of the most popular and profitable college sport in America, let the obit show that the first real blow was landed by a middling university in DeKalb, Illinois, Northern Illinois, with an enrollment of fifteen thousand seven hundred." How does that happen? How does Northern Illinois University set the tone for Ohio State, Michigan, Notre Dame, Alabama, Texas, Oklahoma, USC, Clemson, and every other power program? "By taking a stand and perhaps pricking the conscience of its colleagues, the lurching journey towards playing football has conflicted almost all the stakeholders. Is this good and right, fair and equitable, or reckless and soulless? Ultimately, the voice of clear and strong dissent, led by NIU, cut through some mixed and ambivalent MAC messages." Now personally, I've been a Husky season ticket holder for over fifty years. Nobody enjoys football more than me, but I've got to swallow what I really sort of wanted NIU to consider in support of this decision. So go Huskies. City Clerk Physikas, any report?
Yes, thank you, just quickly, I know that we need to get through the November elections, but we do also have the consolidated elections coming in spring. And the time is almost here where people can start getting signatures on their ballot petitions. Now, the Illinois State Board of Elections has not yet published its candidate guide. We're, we clerks are kind of waiting on that with bated breath. We've heard that it's being vetted by the State Board of Elections attorneys at this point. So we do expect that to come out very soon as well as getting the signature number requirements from the county clerk as well. So just wanted to let you know that you may want to be monitoring the State Board of Elections site and/or the county site at this time to find out what's going on and when. Also, we'll be, of course, sharing this information on social media as much as possible. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn, some of us have been monitoring that, we believe me. City Manager Report, Bill Nicholas.
Just briefly, I want to say that our special meeting next Monday night with the Finance Advisory Committee will have a fairly lengthy and detailed report from my office by the end of the day Thursday to build discussion around and I look forward to that.
I want to commend the City Manager Nicholas, working so hard on that budget. I come in one morning, have any good news or bad news? So we sort of flip-flop back and forth, so, yeah. The city of DeKalb, along with other municipalities in the state of Illinois, are getting hammered because of COVID. We have a mammoth job ahead of us. And so I look forward to meeting with the Finance Advisory Committee and the Council beginning next week. We have no executive session scheduled for tonight, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting of the DeKalb City Council. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Morris, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.